Muhammad Abdullah from Masjid Al Hidayah and a student of Jamiel Al Amin, Imam Jamiel Al Amin. And we were also honored to have Dr. Ware, who is actually a professor in the history of empire, colonialism, and liberation movements. And it was, mashallah, a great program. So stick around for a Q and A, please. We still, the program is on. I just want to quickly remind you again of October 12th, 6:30 PM, ICI fundraising. Please, if you didn't buy the tickets, Brother Malik is outside. He has the QR code. You can really, in three minutes, two minutes, you'll be able to secure your tickets, Insha Allah. Tickets are going really fast. Please do not forget to support ICI by buying the tickets tonight, Insha Allah. And if you want to gift someone, you know, a friend of yours, why not, you know, buy some tickets for your friends too? Jazakallah Khair. Salaam alaikum.
We'll get started immediately with the Q and A, Insha Allah Ta'ala. So if you'd like to join in, again, come to the middle, come to the front, Insha Allah Ta'ala. And we'll go ahead and get started. Bismillah, alhamdulillah, wa sallatu wa sallam ala rasulullah. So we will go ahead and start with the Q and A immediately, Insha Allah Ta'ala. We will keep it as an open Q and A. You can go ahead and raise your hands and ask your questions, Insha Allah. And then one of the, our speakers will answer the question. Barakallah feez, wa salaam. We have about 15 to 20 minutes, Insha Allah.
Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Okay, so my questions for Brother Bilal. It's concerning Palestine. I would reckon that if there was a ceasefire under the Green Party, even if there was, I don't think too many people are going to be happy at us in the United States. So my question is, and I'm speaking specifically about the Middle East. My question is, under the Green Party, where do you see the position of the United States, say, after there is a ceasefire in Gaza, Lebanon, and all of these places?
So, first of all, with respect to the question, you know, I pray that Allah Most High give us exactly this problem. I pray, I pray that Allah, I pray that Allah give us both a ceasefire and a Green Party in the White House, say, Amin. Okay. So let's just game this out so that we can understand where we would be sitting. What that would mean is that we went from the one and a half percent that we were polling before I joined the campaign, to the 5% that we're polling now, to 15%, to 34%, and somehow managed to win popular vote and the Electoral College. And we come into power with not a single friend in Congress and not a single friend in the Supreme Court, but the most overwhelming mandate, popular mandate ever actually in the history of the United States of America. Because it will have meant that there will have been a massive popular rejection of both Team Blue and Team Red. And that massive popular rejection is actually already taking place. The most recent polling says that 70% of independents say that we need a third party because both parties are terrible at their job. And 50% of Republicans and 50% of Democrats say that we need a third party because their parties are terrible at their jobs. So the reality is, is that the principal obstacle between the first of those contingencies being fulfilled, that is us in the White House, is actually simply that the mainstream media colludes to keep our names out of the conversation, to keep people from even being aware that they actually have an option that is available for 95% of American voters. So the first thing that I'll just say is, in order to get this problem, we need to massively mobilize in our communities to get the word out, spread the word, have those uncomfortable conversations, talk people away from a party that's led by a domestic terrorist on one hand and a war criminal on the other. No, 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 oh, sorry. Not him. I mean, so, so in my head, the Green Party is always in the middle of a liberal extremist on one side and a conservative extremist on the other. There's a domestic terrorist that leads Team Red and a war criminal that leads Team Blue. And Malcolm said that the liberal is the fox. It bears its teeth and you think it's smiling at you, but you're on the menu. The conservative is the wolf. It bears its teeth and you know its intent. They differ only in the modality of the hunt. Either way, you're on the menu. Okay? So what, in your scenario, it means that we have succeeded in raising awareness in the American population and despite the fact that the policies of ceasefire and arms embargo might be unpopular with politicians, 70% of the American people want those things. So I do not think that there is a scenario in which there is a significant backlash against us. I think that this is celebrated as one of the most liberating moments in the history of America. And that there's things that you can do right from the beginning. Remember, the last time that the Zionist entity started genociding the Lebanese population, Ronald Reagan himself, like the war monger in chief, called, I think it should be Menachem Begin in 1982, and he compared what the Zionists were doing in Lebanon to the Holocaust of the Jews in that phone call and told him to cut the crap. Except he didn't say crap. I'm in the masjid, so I'm not going to say what he said. And what that means is that right now, any American president could do that. And it certainly means that if we somehow capture the American imagination, somehow capture that media attention and arrive in that position, Dr. Jill Stein has already said that she would not wait until inauguration day. She would make that call on November 6th. Start packing for the Hague, Netanyahu. Orange jumpsuit in your size, homie.
Salaam alaikum. So I had two questions. One is related to the previous question. How do we raise awareness of the Green Party, including where can we get those yard posters? And the other question is, how do we learn more about Africa, Islam in Africa?
See, that right there is the reason why I have hope, nothing but hope. Wallahi victory is assured because of the hearts of our young people. The hearts of our young people long for freedom and they will seize it. I've never seen a generation like this one. And I've been teaching on university campuses. So as a graduate student, 1997 was my first year as a teaching assistant. I finished my PhD in 2004. My first faculty job was at Northwestern. Taught there for four years, Michigan for 10, now UC Santa Barbara for six. 20 years as a professor, I've never seen a generation like this one. These kids are built different. They're done. They've unplugged from the nonsense. They are ready to grasp freedom. So excellent question. So we'll go in reverse order. The first part of the question is, you can take my online class called Invisible Muslims. And it's about Islam, Africa, and the sacred story. And it tells the story of how many of the prophets that you know about in the Quran were actually black people. So a lot of people don't know that Sayyidina Musa, Alaihi Azza, Sallatu Wa Sallam, is described in the overwhelming majority of narrations as Asma Shadid Sumra or Adam Shadidul Uddmah, which means either deep dark brown in color or jet black in color. Many of the prophets in the Quran were black people to begin with. So we start there. A lot of people forget, you know, quite, quite literally, that the word Adam itself meant black in ancient Arabic. The lexicographer said that when somebody's skin color exceeded dark brown, then they were described as Adam. Adam. So all of this is just to say that you can take my online course, Invisible Muslims. It's about history of black people in Islam, from the time of the Quran, through the time of the prophet, through the time of history, right up to Malcolm X. And Insha Allah, if y'all get me elected as the first Muslim president in the United States of America, I have the tickets at History Class with myself in it. And that brings us to your first question. How do we get word out about the Green Party? There's four parts to this, okay? Always, with everything that I do, I picture four corners of the Kaaba and I make Tawaf, you know, around it. So four things. The first is the media and the social media appearances. And that's mostly for us on the campaign to do. Like a close friend of mine, Muslim brother, really brilliant Muslim brother, also Hafiz al-Qur'an and point of fact, close friend of Charlemagne. He's the one I said, I said, okay, now that I'm a VP candidate, text your friend. He's like, I won't text him, I'll call him. And that's how we got the Breakfast Club interview, right? And the Breakfast Club interview that we did has a quarter of a million views on YouTube, 700,000 views just for a short segment on my social media section. So it's our job to take care of the social media and the media, and we are working on it. But what you guys can do in the community is the other three pieces, the other three legs that are thrown. The first is donations. You know, I won't do a fundraiser here. I'm not going to pass out the QR code and mess with people's 501(c)(3) status. But as soon as you get off campus, as soon as you walk outside the building, then they're going to be people with a QR code. And all you have to do is open your phone and scan that QR code and make a donation. And it's really, really important that we do that for a bunch of reasons. But the simplest reason is this. We are not like Democrats and Republicans. We don't accept AIPAC donations. We don't accept any PAC donations. No political action committee can donate to the Green Party. No corporation can donate to the Green Party. We don't allow it. Only people. And only the maximum to any campaign is $3,300. And the maximum to the Green Party as a whole is $41,000. Nobody can write a million dollar check to the Green Party. So that means that we all have to contribute. It has to be a crowdfunding effort. People have to dig into their pockets and contribute whatever they can. If you're in a position to make one of those max donations, 3,300, you need to do it because we need every last one of y'all. And if you are in a position to do it, then that means you know other people that are in that position too, and you need to get them to do it too. Because we need to be able to run national advertising in the last couple of weeks of the campaign, and those things ain't cheap. And we're competing against people that are swimming in Zionist donations. So put your money where your mouth is. This community has proven that it can build big, beautiful suburban mosques. And what has it gotten us? We have done all of this fundraising to build these big, beautiful palaces, and they still kill you with impunity and ask you to vote for them. Because Muslims have shown that we are willing to fundraise to build mosques, but not power. Well, that has to change if you want me to be the first Muslim president in the United States of America. You have to invest in actually building political power. The second thing is, is volunteers. We need people. In Walaf, they say, nit nit aygarabam. People are people's medicine. Everything that ails us is also healed by us, right? The knowledge that you have, the relationships that you have, the expertise that you have, the little bit of free time that you can carve out can be priceless. We have had 500 volunteers sign up in the last week. I've got a team of social media, a social media team entirely volunteer, 20 people. Every Tuesday and Thursday, we have an hour-long meeting. If I were paying for their hourly rate for that meeting, I would go broke after every one of those meetings. But they're volunteering their time. So if you can volunteer your time, I'm going to shout out Dr. Ali Anwar back here, who's been volunteering his time and has like organized, organized, organized. If we had, if we had just 11 more like him, then we could win the state of Texas. If we had 313. Y'all know the meaning of that number. 300, it's not, yes, it's the Battle of Badr. The three, it's not just Badr though. 313 are those that stood with Sayyidina Dawud when he slayed Goliath. 313 is the minimum number required to assure victory. If we get 313 real soldiers in every community, we win. We win. We win, for sure. So the volunteers. And then lastly, voter registration, actual registration. I'll just give you an example of things that I've done since I came to the campaign. I was listening to a pitch by a data analyst who was saying, we're going to get the donations up by running targeted social media ads and they'll create look-alike communities so that whoever donates, we find a bunch of people like them and then we hit them with the ads and we'll get more donations. And I said, that's great, you know, and I know people do that, but we're really looking to up the voter registration in the 18 to 29 range. And 18 to 29 year olds are our primary audience on TikTok and on Instagram. And 18 to 29 year olds ain't got no money. They're not in a position to donate. And we really don't actually need their money. We need y'all's money. We need the votes from those 18 to 29 year olds. I said, has anybody ever had those pixels, those targeted social media ads that track your data, they output, rather than to a donation page, have it output to a voter registration page? They were like, no, no one's ever thought of that. I said, that's why you need to bring somebody from outside to the inside because that's literally the first thing that I thought of. So the point is, is that we need to get voter registrations up. And it's not just so that we can do well on Election Day. It's also because it will actually help us get into the mainstream media. Because the media keeps score on fundraising and voter registration. So if we show that we're raising money and getting new voters registered, then the media will have to cover us. If the media has to cover us, then they'll hear what two intelligent, moral human beings with common sense solutions sound like, and they'll compare that to the... Is there any sound worse than the braying of donkeys? Is what the Quran says, right? Well, we know a party that represents themselves as donkey, don't we? Right? And they make braying sounds like jackasses. And that's not cursing. Jackass is literally the name of a donkey. Is there any sound worse than the braying of those jackasses that say, we're working tirelessly for a ceasefire where they blow kids to bits? And when they spread corruption in the earth, they say, nay, indeed, we are peacemakers. That's suratul Luqman, the first part, the part about the donkeys. Yeah, suratul fi'il gives us the other half of the bar, right? And have you seen how your Lord dealt with the party of the elephant? It's almost like God saw the whole thing coming. And how did the Lord deal with the party of the elephant? Flock of birds. We don't look like much. We don't take big money donations, but if we move as a flock, then we can fell the mightiest of beasts. Somebody said that we need to have a green bird be the symbol for the Green Party. Insha Allah. So those are the answers, is that if we can do those four things, we get the media out, and if you guys get volunteers, voter registrations, and donations, then we can do this thing.
We're going to have at least one more question from the brothers, and I have two questions from the sisters, Insha Allah. We'll end it there just to respect their time, Insha Allah.
Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Jazakallah Khair. Thank you for coming and taking your time out, Brother Bilal Ware and also Imam Sahab. It was a great lesson. So comment and a question. You know, the history is very important to know because if you don't know your history, you're bound to repeat it. And my question is about the other part of the history, history being a subjective thing. So if you write history, it's different. Imam Sahab has different. What is the standard way to find out what we should follow or find out? Because it's been written, and obviously you're politically involved. At some point, somebody will come up with a new history. Once you're under the microscope, we'll know much more about you that even you won't know about you. So how does it work? What is the standard that we should follow being a history professor? Thank you.
I mean, there's only one, there's only one historian that has an objective view, right? And that is Allah. You know, only Allah knows, you know, exactly what happened. As for the rest of us, you know, those of us that are trained in the discipline, learn to use a critical reading of source materials in order to arrive at the closest approximation that we can to what happened. And it's not the case that all histories are equally subjective. The difference between like interpretation that is based on speculation and interpretation that is based on evidence is vast, right? So just for an example, my doctoral dissertation, I think, had 1,200 footnotes in it. And every time I speak in public, I'm still making a footnote in my head of every single fact that I bring into a conversation. I was like, I had trepidation for the past week because I've been citing figures from Yaqeen Institute that said that the most recent polling data says that 53% of the Muslims that were polled by Yaqeen say they're voting third party. 15% say that they're voting for Team Blue. 4% say that they're voting for Trump. And I cited those numbers in like six interviews because they had been quoted to me by someone who had read the study carefully, but did not have it in front of them. So I was literally sweating because I've been quoting these numbers. And if they had been misquoted to me, that Yaqeen Institute came out, those are the numbers. Because I'm putting a footnote next to every single argument that I make. There is a difference between speculation and arguments that are based on evidence. And if somebody comes with better evidence to correct my interpretation, alhamdulillah. What did Imam Shafi say? He said that when I am debating with someone, I don't care if the truth emerges from their tongue or if it emerges from my tongue. What matters is that the truth emerged. So I'm happy to be corrected with someone that comes with better sources, better information, and improves our state of knowledge and understanding. My ego is not at stake in the way that I write history. All I'm trying to do is provide the best account I can so that we operate on the basis of knowledge. And knowledge, human knowledge, is always provisional. That's why the scholars say, wallahu alam, and God knows best. It's called epistemic humility. It means having the humility to be willing to say, as Imam Malik said, he was asked 26 questions and he responded, la adri, to all but nine of them.
No worries, no worries. So I'm going to ask two questions from the sisters, and then fully up to you guys' discretion of how long you want to stay for the rest of the brothers, but okay, Insha Allah. Some more questions from the sisters. Bismillah. One, colonizers don't give up the throne easily. What if the smiling fox does this through war? How would you approach the situation?
Can you repeat the question again? Can you repeat the question? Colonizers don't give up easily. How would the smiling fox?
I'm going to ask these together, just because Dr. Ali mentioned to end the raff with this, Insha Allah. So number one, colonizers don't give up the throne easily. What if the smiling fox does this through war? How would you approach the situation? And the last question, you can answer both, Insha Allah, is, can Dr. Ware recommend books, in addition to his, about liberation and political Islam for beginners new to embracing this movement?
Insha Allah. So colonizers definitely don't give up the throne easily. We know that. We've been fighting colonizers since our enslavement from the shores of West Africa 500 years ago. And we're still fighting those same colonizers. We might not be physically unchanged, but we're definitely still mentally unchanged, most of us, in one capacity or another. As our doctor and teacher mentioned earlier, the victory is already guaranteed, whether they give it up or not. Nasru min Allah. Wa fathun qariib. It's near. The Prophet of Allah, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, said that the whole world was rolled up for him where he could just see it, from the east all the way to the west. And the dominion of Allah ruled over the entire earth. The question isn't, will Islam take over? The question is, will you be part of the solution of the problem? So surely, colonizers don't give up easily. And if they go to war, then we respond with war. We're not a religion that says slap one cheek and I'm going to give you the other one. That's not how we work. We defend ourselves. We defend ourselves if we're threatened with physical violence. And we see now, Lebanon has stepped up to the plate. Hands off Lebanon was a chant yesterday. And I'm not going to get too political because I want to remind us even in our questioning, in our answering, we have to be thankful to our guests, Islamic Center of Irving. La yushkri la, ma la yushkri nas. If you're not thankful to the people, you can't be thankful to Allah. So we want to thank Islamic Center of Irving and recognize that they're a 501(c)(3) organization. We're not going to get too politically deep. And we don't want to endorse any candidate. And I'm just doing that on behalf of the organization because I already know that the Uncle Sahabs are somewhere like, you know what I mean? Just gritting their teeth. So we have to, we have to just be careful, you know what I mean? But we don't respond with violence by letting people commit more violence against us. So if they resort to war, then we have to be willing to stand up for our brothers and sisters. And from the position that we're in, that would mean voting and trying to change what is causing that war. Because America can't go to war without the support of the citizens. Because America can't go to war without the support of the citizens. You know, Muhammad Ali was facing that same battle back in the 60s when he gave up his heavyweight title. All they wanted him to do was go and box like exhibition matches. He was a heavyweight champion of the world. All he had to do was go and do some exhibition matches. That's it. He said, no, I'm not going to support the killing of other brown and black people while I'm still fighting right here in my own country. If I want to go to war, I'm going to go to war with my colonizers. They right here. My enemies is right here. You got to see that speech, man. What, what, what a beautiful man. So if they want to go to war, we go to war. And that war can be a war within ourselves first and foremost, that you had enough. That's the biggest war. I mean, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala protect us. I don't have, I'm, I'm not coming from a political perspective. All I can do is give you Da'wa, you know? I'm sure Dr. Bilal can answer it from a more political, strategic position.
I love how you say the most political things and then say, I'm not political though. Is that what it is? I don't know about y'all, but I ain't... May, may Allah preserve and increase our Imam, every good thing. Mashallah. And like getting to spend time with you on, on this trip is a highlight for me. So I just want you to know that and I appreciate it. So to answer the, the second question from the sisters and to thread that together with this beautiful response. In addition to my first book, The Walking Quran, Jihad of the Pen, my second book is a, is a, that I co-wrote with two of my former students is also a useful resource. There's lots of excellent works. And what I just suggest to, to, to respond to this question is that I will, I'll just make a social media post, hopefully in the next 24 to 48 hours. And I'll just give you my 11 best books on Islamic liberation theology. You know, the kind that, you know, like actually draw on the resources of our tradition for liberation rather than exploitation. Because unfortunately, like there's a lot of intellectual trends in the modern Muslim community that are really about justifying capitalism and imperialism. I did a whole online spiritual intensive that was called Islam, Africa and Anti-Imperialism because a lot of people don't realize that there's always been a strong thread of anti-imperialist thought in Islam from the beginning. Well, of course, because Ibrahim was an anti-imperialist. Musa was an anti-imperialist. The Prophet, Alaihi Afdah Sallatu Wa Sallam, rode out to Tabuk to take on the Roman Empire. His lieutenants that he deputized, those four rightly guided Imams, toppled the two most corrupt empires on the face of the earth in their time. And contrary to what most Muslims think, they did not establish an empire. Yazid established an empire. After killing Imamul Hussain, creating the first hereditary monarchy in the history of Islam. West Africans were not incorporated into that so-called caliphate. So they wrote critically about this. Islam has always had an anti-imperialist tradition. Because to be a Khalifa is not to be a caliph in the sense of a Sultan or a king. What is Khilafa? Khilafa is stewardship. It means that you have authority in the earth, but you are held accountable for how you manage the things that are in your care. What are the principal things that Muslims are required to have custody over, to take care of, stewardship over? Wallahi, with God as my witness, and again, this isn't a campaign speech, but they're literally the three things at the bottom of every single Green Party poster. People, planet, peace. What is there except for stewardship of these? And to return to the question then about what happens if they make war and disturb the peace? We're already at war. Uh, I think it was Mao that said that politics is war without bloodshed. And war is politics with bloodshed. Right? Whether you know it or not, you are already at war. And you should definitely know that you are at war when your co-religionists are being slaughtered wholesale. So that means that however you might feel about politics, there are certain things that they might be marquroch at ordinary times, but they are required under circumstances of war. If y'all don't understand that you're at war, I don't know how I can help you. We have an opportunity to win this war, to topple this empire peacefully. This may be the last chance that humanity gets. Last thing that I'll say, I'll just mention this about why I joined this campaign. Again, not to advocate, but to explain. I asked Dr. Jo Stein about her position on American foreign policy because I knew she was about, she, she, her credentials as an anti-Zionist Jewish white woman were, were attested by all of my friends in the Palestinian liberation movement, Palestinian Americans and anti-Zionist Jews. They all said that she is completely committed to total liberation, one state, from the river to the sea, with equal rights for everybody, land back, restorative justice, all of it. So I didn't even ask her about her stance on Palestine. I asked about her stance on American foreign policy. And she said, the goal of American foreign policy for me is to dismantle the American empire. And I said to her in response, yeah, and you better hurry up and do it quick before somebody do it for you. If you dismantle this empire voluntarily, then you put all of these resources that are now being wasted, killing people, and you put them to work fixing the roads, giving people healthcare, giving people housing, funding education, making America keep up to its broken promises for the first time in its history. And if we don't, then this empire is going to be dismantled in a different way. Y'all got nice and comfortable out here in these beautiful suburban homes. If you want to keep them, you better get politically active. Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullah. Do I? Oh, yeah. With your permission, Imam, may I? A'adu Billahiminin Shaytaan Rajin. Bismillah, Rahman, Rahim. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil 'Alameen, Rahman, Rahim. Malik Yomuddin. Iyaaka na Abu, wa iyaaka na Staineh. Denas Siraatul Mustaqim. Siraatul Ladinan Amta Alaihim. Gairil Maghdubi Alaihim, Wallad Daulin. Amin. Oh, Allah, give us victory. We do not ask for the means to this victory. We do not pray to, to you for strength. We do not pray to you for guidance. We do not pray for you, to you for more numbers. We pray for victory and we let you choose the means. Because we would only ask on the basis of what we know and you would grant on the basis of what you know. So Allah, give us victory in our lifetime so that we can witness it. Allah, give us victory in our lifetime so we can witness it. Allah, give us victory in our lifetime so we can witness it. May our children grow up in a free America. May our brothers and sisters in Palestine be free and liberated. May we pray the next Eid with them in a free Palestine. May the yoke of imperialism be lifted from our brothers and sisters in Sudan and in Congo and in the Horn of Africa. May you relieve the suffering of all of those who have experienced such traumatic loss in these tumultuous times. And may all of this pain and all of this bloodshed be a storm that shook the foundations but brought the abundant rain that led to the flowering of a whole new age for humanity. We ask this by the rank of your blessed messenger, Alaihi Afdah Sallatu Wa Sallam. Inna Allah wa malaikatuh yusuluna laddnabi yayyu ladzina amanu assalualayi wasallamataslima. Allahumma saliya la sayyidina muhammedin al-fatih lima. Ghulak wal xotim lima. Sabak al-nasr haq bil haq wal hadila. Siraatik al-mustaqim waala. Alaihi haq qadrhi wa mikdaari lazim. Subhanallah, Rabbika Rabbil Azati, ya miyasifun. Wassalamun al-mursalin. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil 'Alameen, al-fatihah. Amin, amin.